Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we're gonna get started here tonight. Pat's gonna go through our rule call.
What do you go to?
Present.
Yeah, present.
You're an awesome present.
More blocking present.
All right. Thank you, Pat. Those that are able, please stand for the flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, we are going to do a virtue card reading to get started. That will give us a read.
Ah, today's virtue act. That is telling the truth kindly, considerate, of how your words affect others' feelings. Think before you speak, knowing what is there left unsaid. When you're impactful, others find it easier to hear what you do have to say. Pack builds bridges. You're practicing tack when you are careful about the feelings of others. Stop yourself from teasing or embarrassing others. Tell the truth kindly and gently. Decide if it is better to tell the truth or keep silent. Often keep unpleasant or critical thoughts to yourself. Treat people who are different as you would treat anyone. Affirmation. I am impactful. I think before I speak. I'm diplomatic even when I feel strongly. I tell the truth kindly and gently.
Awesome. Thank you, Pat. Uh, Board of Education guidelines with an open mind will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate success in academics, arts, and athletics. Uh, I am going to roll into public comments for tonight. Just a brief paragraph to get started. Um, for public comments, uh, during this period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from the public on any item not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you, but may ask questions. The board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Uh, each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to talk. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. Um, I just want to reiterate, uh, being mindful of the three minutes um, to keep the flow of the board reading going tonight. Um, so with that being said, do we have any public comments?
Hi, do you? My name is Cory Dying and I live on eight twenty one Rivers Road here in Kusa, and I have a student in eighth grade. And I'm here to talk about, and honestly, I was coming before today's snow day. Um, but I'm here to talk about the existing school calendar and also the snow day policy that we have. Um, the existing calendar, I guess, I was, I look at it every year at insert or open house saves and um, I just think that we, every year, I feel like we've sent our calendar out further and further. Um, I feel there's a lot of service or record keeping day and those school days that are um, coming to play that have never been before. Um, I know I have, I had discussions with administration about what is done in service days. I do appreciate what is all done. I understand the goals behind them. However, as a parent, I'm lucky enough, as many of you know that my husband is home, but for many working families, that is an extra stressor to find daycare or this or that for their students or where they're gonna go during those days. So I would like to just come to the board meeting today to just ask you guys, I know you're developing the next year's school calendar, to maybe be a little bit more forward thinking on how would we can maybe handle professional development days um, that would serve us everybody, students, parents, and staff. Um, I did look at all the school districts in our area and compare calendars. Um, we are not these other school districts. I choose not to put my children in these school districts. Um, all of my kids are here. My twenty-two-year-old was graduated from here. So um, Wisconsin Rapids has five professional development, record-keeping days this year, thirteen no-school days. They start the same day we do, and their last day was supposed to be the second. I have no idea when the plan is now. Uh, Port Edwards, they also start on the same day, but their last day of school was May thirty-first of this year. And they have four, well, seven personal development days and three record-keeping days, and then fourteen no-school days, compared to Kusa's eight and service record-keeping days and sixteen no-school days. So, um, there's other flows and I know how hard it has. I also develop calendars at work, and so I understand the stress behind that. But I would hope we could be a little bit more forward-thinking. And then rolling right into my next, I have notes, so I can all on topic. Um, snow days, um, I do realize how difficult they can be. However, it's very frustrating as a parent to hear a snow day has been canceled the next day at three o'clock. Yeah. For potential heavy snowfall or potential heavy rain. Um, as we know with our climates, I mean, not to be political, I don't know here nor there, but our climates are changing and our weather seems to be more extreme. So I think as a district, we need to be better prepared. Uh, we need to figure things out. We can do better with snow days, how we're gonna handle those. Um, virtual learning, neither here nor there. I know my sister has students in uh, Rams, and she's like, oh, this is what we do. She's like, oh, this is great. It's a half hour learn, you know, from eight-thirty, twelve-thirty. It's all learning. The afternoon is for one-on-one sessions. But my nephew was on the phone at nine o'clock this morning wanting to play Roblox with my kids, because he was already done his virtual learning day today. So they have not mastered it either. So I think um, we have the time. We need to figure that out. Technology and sweet market. You know, I have the ability to work from home in bad weather. I did go to work today. Um, the roads were um, I rode the road crazy, but the main roads were okay by the time I went in at nine o'clock. Um, I just think we need to be better at that.
Thank you, Cory. Um, I'm sorry to cut you off with the three minutes there. Sure. No, absolutely. Um, and we will be evaluating um, things that you mentioned in a closed session. Um, you know, either this month or our next month or in the future of Jendy Islands too. So we'll definitely um, look into some of those comments that you made, so. Um, any other public comments for tonight? All right. Uh, thank you again Cory for your comments. Uh, we are gonna roll into showcasing schools and student learning. Uh, we have Anita first with the CWS update tonight.
Well, hi. We were supposed to meet tonight, but we didn't. So um, I have nothing to update you on. I'm thinking all is good at CWS, because it has been good here so far. Uh, so I will just take this time to say on behalf of the Governance Council, thank you for the box of chocolates this year. But they all, we all just enjoy those boxes of chocolates that could lead into the next year.
And you are working on your bylaws, doing, you're doing some work.
Next month for sure. And so next month, maybe it might be a little longer for us, but um, yeah, that's a, I know.
Thank you for leading that work. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we always appreciate your updates, even though they were a little, little small tonight, but we appreciate all the work that you do for the district. So um, thank you for coming on in tonight. Any questions for? Anita? No? All right. Thank you. We're gonna roll into overarching results, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, so our overarching results are an inclusive school district develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community. So Mr. Sprain has a couple of guests with him tonight to showcase Humke and the work that's going on over there with the reading program. So.
Uh, Mary and Kristen. I think everybody else does, so I won't use that anymore than that.
Do you want the TVs?
Would you please? Yeah. And I did, and I've got the remote right.
Oh, you got the remote.
And I do have to hook that up. Can you put the presentation on the screen? I shared it with you earlier. If you just did a search. Just type.
Yeah.
Let's read. Um, a little bit, um, as we do, and we get this all over right now. Kristen, again, five K Mary's second grade, and I'm on Mary. Mary is the most veteran teacher, maybe even employee in the district. So shout out to Mary. So by the way, if you're coming up tonight, so thank you very.
All right, here it is.
You can be my button pusher?
I will push your buttons.
Well, those two, the three of us are gonna tag team on this presentation, so.
I'm gonna just share it so that we can record this on that.
Oh, okay.
Let's do that so that way we have it on on the uh, recording. All right, you're on.
All right. Well, thank you again. Humke Bliss Reading. Well, what is Bliss Reading and Build Your Rainbow? That's what we're gonna, well, before we jump into that, let's talk about reading. We all value reading and stuff on the second slide, Jerry. Um, couple of things, as you think about what's really important about reading and it's a quick, quick couple of facts. Reading shows twenty minutes per day builds empathy for others, creates a strong vocabulary and positively affects and boosts our mental and physical wellbeing. We know that students who read develop assets and developmental assets, and these kids are better socially developed. Um, they have an opportunity to uh, we want kids to develop assets to understand who they are, because they just do better health-wise, not only physically. And we know about vocabulary. And on the second screen, uh, right there, there's just a shout out to the importance of how many words you develop by just starting reading and the skills that go in with that. And a lot of that's not surprising to us as educators. But the thing that's, okay, that's the why. Yeah, we want kids reading and we want them reading systemically at home so they become lifelong readers. That's what we're shooting for. So, um, it was our goal this year. We wanted to increase at-home reading through a systemic building-wide process that was sustainable for teachers, that partnered with parents, and engaged in students and positive reading practice at all. Again, we want it lifelong. We've had kids read at home, but it wasn't, it was kind of like a little bit here and there. It wasn't suspended. So now we've got everybody in the building rocking the ball and getting excited about boys reading and building a rainbow. So with that said, Mary, would you do me, oh, yeah, talk a little bit about why we came up with those numbers or a little bit more to that right there? Would you mind speaking to that?
Um, I've always had my kids, I have to read two stories each night at home for homework. And I'm pointing Keith out right now, because I had Cam and my running came after school right at semesters time. And um, he came in and I said, he's gotta read two stories every night. And I always give my kids something they can read at home. So it always goes in their homework folder. And um, by the end of the year, Cam was at grade level. He did an outstanding job. Got caught up to the other kids and, but my kids have always had to read two stories for two books at home every single night. And I always give them something that they can read at home. So then at the end of the year, I would always have, they would hit a five, if they stay on that schedule, they get a five hundred mark at the end of the year. So then I have them to my house for lunch, and then they all get a prize at the end of the year. So and if there's struggles at home, I would make time in my day to listen to them read, or have some parent volunteers that come in, but um, that is the goal, that they read two stories every single night.
Yeah. So Bliss Reading, what is it? Let's read two books, two chapters, and point it out to you. That's it. That's Bliss Reading. But every year we have, we have a game. Our first game is Build, Building the Rainbow. So our first thing is what we wanted to do, um, is make it so books are, we want, and then we partner with our after-school program too. And right here in the hallway, Paul Lee Perry was instrumental in partnering with community resources, and these books here are not a part of our library in the building. They're part of our Humke Free Little Library that's in the building. So these are in the hallway. We have one at each grade level. And Lacerie Christian Church sponsored all these resources. And you can see those little white circles on there. These books have that stamp on there. It all helps organize that. So kids can always get access to a book, and if they don't bring it back, they don't care. Because we want them to have access to literature ongoing in forever. So these are free little libraries in there that kids would just get books. Uh, next slide, please, Mary. Now, uh, Kristen, would you speak to these kids and what looks like for building your rainbow?
You bet. So, um, each magnet um is earned by reading a certain number of books, red, yellow, green, I believe, up to green, you have to read.
So here's the magnets, yeah.
Or, or earn fifty units, which as John referred to, is two books, twenty minutes or um, two chapters. And then at our kindergarten level, um, the beginning of the year, we start out where parents are reading to the children. Again, this is just creating a uh, an environment where reading is important at home, whether the child is reading for parents, or in our case, parents are reading for children and encouraging that together time. And then by mid-year, this time of year, it starts to switch where the students now are reading to the parents. And they earn those magnets based on the number of books that they're reading um, at home. And it's all charted out on charts that we have that we send home on a weekly basis that keeps, helps parents keep track of the books that they're reading. They turn them in at the end of each week. And we, as teachers, record and then award um students their magnets based on the number of books they have.
Cool. So again, these, these are just little business card magnets. So the business cards, and I got them on the locker. And it's kind of like they're working towards something and they it's incentivized and they like it. It's not manipulating. They can work as hard as they want to. Um, so with that being said, take a look at the next slide. These, we're building our rainbows here. So here's where we're at. So if you kind of like, okay, how good is good or where's, where's good? So just uh, keeping track of things by grade levels is an overview of, you could say by October first, you want every kid to have their red. By November first, orange, yellow, um, December first. Um, so you can see right now, we want this time year to, most of our kids to be getting to green this time year, and the blue gets to be a vaguely, because you instead of going up, basically go farther, because that's, it just gets harder and harder in terms of reading. But in terms of just kind of reading that final hurdle. So right now, uh, how well is it working? Well, we've got more kids reading than ever at home. You know, I believe we don't have no way of tracking that. But it just feels best like, like that, that's what's happening. Um, and kids are excited. What I'll do is I'll come around um, every Monday, um, stop them at the end of the day, the last half hour or so, and can our, very carefully, the National Planning is listening to kids. Um, acknowledge them, you take their picture, we send it home, and put it, you know, and so it's just a way to celebrate. And you're reading, you know, you're building your rainbow. So that's a little bit about what's going on there. Um, Terry on the next slide.
John, can I have the question?
Yeah.
So for the red, fifty, 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 or fifty units? Oh, so, okay. Fifty, 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 and then you go to a hundred. Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
We can get you on the phone too. Yeah.
So, well, the percentage, I'm trying to, like, my, my brain, when it comes to the percentages, I'm usually like, okay, that's based out of a hundred, but obviously that doesn't total up, so I'm.
Yeah, so and, and I would say where you can see red right now, five K is about sixty-five percent of the kids have gotten red back in the middle of December, when I put this together.
Okay.
And so fifty-three percent have gotten orange and so on down the line.
Okay, so it's not designed to total out to a hundred on each. It's not, it's not necessarily out of the student population, or it's just how many students have reached those levels.
Correct.
Okay.
Like the second half of the Belker.
Yeah, okay.
On the next slide is, is just the number of kids who uh, there are three hundred and twenty-nine kids in the building. That's the number of kids who were in each one of those magnets back in December. And then on the, on the next slide, uh, this is a group of kids that took pictures of their, this week, and they have built their rainbow, and they're pretty golden. And so that's what you see, can see after they say each time now, every hundred units, they get a
Gold.
Gold magnet to add to their, so you can continue to just work as hard as far as you want to. So these are some of our gold. So Kristen and Mary, anything you want to add?
Um, the one thing that I enjoy about this program is that it is school-wide. And so the language across the school um, is understood by all students. It's like, hey, it's not that you got your gold magnet. That's amazing, you know? Second graders and third graders and kindergartners all understand what that means, and they're not, are able to encourage each other um, by visually seeing um, the magnets. We all have them displayed in a spot outside of our classroom where people passing by can see how everybody's doing and encourage one another. Um, so it's it's been exciting to see people encouraging one another.
And the benefit of it too is having to go back to the goals. Parents know from grade to grade what's expected. There's, there's consistency, there's uniformity. It's easy for people to buy.
Well, thank you for showcasing that.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
This is our first year.
Oh, okay.
We, we, Kristen and Mary are two of our representatives on our school planning team. And I said, and this is the conversation that came up with our school planning team. It's like, hey, I think we need to do a better job on this. And so, of course, the last year we planned it.
Well, thank you guys for, for doing that program. I know if you get hooked on reading and setting up the lab, so. Thank you. Thank you. Any, any questions? All right. Thank you guys again. Um, we are gonna head into communicating with the board. We have our business manager, Lynn Knight.
I will defer later in the agenda.
All right. Um, and our director of student services, Brian Ger. Make sense to. Yeah, to, and.
Yeah, we're moving right along here.
Wait, what's about here? I see. Yeah, Alexa might be at a sporting event, our student representative. Uh, might have something to leave.
I have, uh, I have an update. Okay, yeah. And I won't defer. I will. So, um, Student Council has a winter food drive collecting over two hundred and fifty food items as well as cleaning and cleaning supplies. Uh, the next blood drive is March first from one to six P M. Uh, and we have a goal of collecting three hundred and five units. National Honor Society did bell ringing for the Salvation Army, F B L A, and S C C L A are choosing events and preparing for their conferences. I believe that's going to be coming up. Um, softball and baseball open gyms have started. It's National School War Recognition Month, and as a token of our appreciation, Student Council made cards for each of the members.
Ah.
But they're stuck at school.
The snow day is getting away at that.
Thank you to the board members. Um, and then also, uh, hard as it is, believe the musical practice has started, and it's March seventeenth and eighteen.
Oh, wow.
Is there a chili for charity mission? I love chili, so I was just hoping that.
March seventeenth, did you say?
And that was great. I, I was. I'm crazy about to get you.
Great. All right. Thank you, uh, Alexa, for getting those notes typed up and sent over to Keith. Um, and I know that we're skipping this month for athletic programs, correct?
Yeah, did you want to share? I, I, I just, you want to start?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I was just gonna discuss wrestling. Uh, there was a big um, tournament at the middle school yesterday. The gym was completely full. Um, so it's really good to see programs growing. And our girls' women's high school varsity program is blasting really well. Um, four, four to five or six champions every, every tournament. Um, on a fifty-team tournament, the girls took course, which is pretty crazy for a vice.
First year.
Yeah, so, um, just want to talk about the, the youth program at the middle school, and um, it was, they turned out last night. I don't know, I, I don't know if I saw you. I don't know, but it was, it was small.
More John on that, but also a note that our enrollment in the wrestling program is uh, over the double what it was last year.
Awesome.
Yeah, and so, strong rope.
So it's, it's good to see programs uh, starting to flourish and, and grow again, that to what we used to see.
And I think the girls' numbers at the middle school basketball
Oh, best.
are on the way up. So we'll get you some numbers on that. Show that on.
First game tomorrow.
Ooh, go ahead.
All right. Uh, everyone's favorite part, policy governance. We're gonna move into that now. Um, E S R five, if you want to review the.
Absolutely. All right, the policy statement is annually, the board will conduct a summative evaluation of the district administrator. It will be based upon the data collected throughout the year from the respective monitoring reports on results and operations. Elements of the evaluation process include a formal summative review, a self-evaluation from the district administrator.
Um, and I know we talked about this last week at our board workshop. Uh, we compile, um, you know, comments, pros and cons throughout each board workshop and board meeting. I write those down, and then I put them into a Google Drive, and then we talk about it um, throughout the year, and then we finalize it um towards the end of the spring, early summer. So, um, unless there's any issues, I'm just gonna look for emotions to get that approved. Also, who, second, first and a second, uh, David, please say hi. I oppose non-motion carry. Thank you, guys. Um, and then, oh, you love an instructional program.
Yeah, and that policy statement is annually, the board will conduct a review of instructional programs that offer challenging and relevant opportunities for all students to achieve at levels defined in the board's results policies.
And I know we had um, a good discussion last week about the P C L model. Um, any, any other comments or discussion for that? Or anything to, to note?
Well, one, one thing, because we also have a link to the teachers.
Yeah.
With the teacher.
Yeah.
And one of the things that I thought about afterward, you know, I've been thinking about the whole P C L thing, and the top team, talking to Terry about some stuff. One of, one of the things that I thought, and, because the, the way I understand this is, okay, this starts out at Humke, and then it, and then moves on, and it moves on, and it's just all the way up through, through the high school. And I thought, the most important piece of this puzzle, I believe, is Humke. That's the foundation. And I'm a verbal, you know, if the foundation is weak, why, why keep going?
You know. Good point.
You know, and I, I just, I, you know, and I, I just keep thinking, you know, some people went, oh, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? You know, this is the way it is now. This is the way of education today. And then I thought of my first grade teacher. Mrs. Guston. You know, kindergarten. I went and visited John's school. What day was it? I think it was Monday or Tuesday. It was early in the week, so I knew I had to work wrestling. Might have been Monday, Monday. And I stopped in the kindergarten. I stopped in and talked to Courtney, just touched base with her. And it was kindergarten the way I remember. Lots of fun. Just making, you know, school fun. And then I remembered Mrs. Guston in first grade. And back then, school was hold your hand, I'm talking, sit at your desk, hold your hands, and look at me. And that's what we were taught. And then when it comes time for you to do something, you'll do it at your desk. And I thought, okay, I don't remember if it was fun or not. I mean, I did learn. But the way things are now and the way the world is now, it's not like that. It's you've got to, you've got to integrate and work with other students. And I realized there's hurdles to be made. But I think we're up to it. And I think the instruction in the future will, will prove that. So, anyway, just my thoughts.
Well, thank you for going over and visiting. So, and John is planning another spotlight sometime in March.
Yeah, working with Jack and teachers right now. You did one that kind of is more of a morning routine. I'm pushing, we're gonna need to have more of an afternoon to use the purpose of. But we'll get a date to you, and we'll work up with, with this and show.
And, and we realized that, you know, it's been, it's been hard to get that strong foundation built. I, I appreciate that, that comment. It has been, it's taken longer than what we should have. And, and, and again.
But the thing is, you want the foundation built right.
Correct. Yes.
You don't, you don't wanna, you don't wanna rush it.
Right.
Because then you'll mess it up.
Well, and can I just read this paragraph? Because I think this summarizes it. School change is complex. Systemic acts of change involve a slower, more intentional process with collaborative planning, progress monitoring, and curriculum alignment. And the, and the P C L model recognizes those ten interrelated aspects necessary for school change. And when schools begin taking on the change process, all ten parts of the model must be implemented and integrated. That's a lot to take on. There are no quick fits, fixes. The teachers, coaches, and administrators must reflect on their practices in school change. A change in practice provides evidence of a change in thinking, and these shifts are facilitated through meaningful interactions with others around a unified goal. And I think, you know, what's, and what I'm hearing too is that time piece. How can we get the support and time necessary to, to build that strong? How can we get the support and time necessary to, to build that strong?
Yeah, I just wanted to, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, the principals want to share anything around instructional programming?
You know, I guess for me, it comes back to, you know. And nothing against the way path learning.
That was the day, that's what it was.
And so, the world is growing and changing and ultimately, you know, comes back to this, we, you know, personally, and I believe we need to have children who can be responsible, independent. Can self-direct and self-regulate. And this model lends itself to kids to do that because ultimately, we want to have kids. Who can be, you know, solve problems, take initiative. To do all these things and figure this out and not wait to be told, you know. Because that creates dependence. We want independence. That doesn't mean we're not asking them to collaborate, because that's really important. That's all part of the model. And so, and, and just responding to kids' needs and who they are developmentally. So I'm excited by it, yes, so.
Any other questions, comments, Nathan, Keith?
I mean, we're at a different point in, uh, in the journey than. You know, P C L and doing a lot of graduate release responsibility. To talk about, and talk about in the past and. You know, and I think, yeah, we're, we're on the journey. We're moving on. I think it will be to a good spot.
You know, I got to add to is, as we're working on that journey, is our, it's working to support our teachers to help them learn together. And I think that's one of the things that we're really seeing. You know, the particular focus as we're learning, certainly graduate release responsibility, you heard a lot about that last year. But continuing this year on those same areas is having our teachers work together, having them. And it's been fun watching some connection between the middle school and the high school teachers. Being able to continue and just simply put, how do we support each other as we're learning new things that we're, nobody's trying to solo. And we're working it together. And that's, we know the, that's going to be part of the answer, and so building that up and. As we have those teams and those connections and that coaching to get in place, um, when the new learning comes, at whatever stage that is. We, we'd be working with the same system.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to comment on the keeper that pitch last week. Um, I know we all found it to be very positive. And, um, as a district, we need to continue to develop, and trust with our teachers, um, from administration to down the staff. Um, we have developed that communication and trust and, um, I know it's something that we found to be very positive. And it's just something that we need to continue to develop and work on as a district, so. I know it, it took a lot of courage and, um, you know, for, for those staff members to be trusted to speak on, on, on other teachers. To that, uh, community and, um, you know, appreciate them coming forward and. Um, again, to work on that communication and trust as, as we work on that as well too, so.
Can we just have Brian comment on how this is working together? And I think. If, there's a good bridge that we're building between regular and special, and I think you talked, we talked about it last week, but it's good to.
About how with the P C L model and the general education classroom. Our special education interventionist, their interventions that go with the P C L model. So, when we're doing intervention or specifically designed instruction, what we're doing isn't separate from what the classroom is doing. It's aligned. So as we have worked to create the inclusive classroom experience where students with disabilities. Or within their general education class, this really helps us create that opportunity where. Hey, we're learning the general curriculum while still meeting the needs of the disability and working towards their I E P goals, so.
Well, and just, so after looking at the survey results, I'm, I'm reflecting, right? And I'm like. Is there, I, I need some good here. So I, I, I had another meeting with, uh, Michelle Amen, who you guys have met before, who's doing the work over at. At Humke. And I said, can you pull out in your communications with staff some positives? So I do want to read these, because. It does seem like when, when, we, we, we heard a lot of the challenges in the feedback. But, uh, she writes, hi, Terry, I want to let you know that I've been receiving positive feedback from Humke teachers regarding the curriculum work we've been doing. One teacher said to me last month, and I quote, don't get me wrong, this is hard work, but I can tell my students are learning more than in the past years. And I know that I'm a better teacher than I was. Another writes, or another, she writes, I want to take the curriculum we planned and make it better. Uh, from another, the work is going faster now. It takes me less time to plan lessons and write curriculum than when we started. And I trust my judgment, judgment so much more. When you talk, I am affirmed. I love it when I think. And one other is, I love that we are picking our own mentor texts to teach with. We have great books. So just a couple of highlights.
All right, so at this side, I am going to look for a motion through all your monthly instructional program. Second, first and a second, all favor please say hi. Opposed, none motion carry. Um, so thank you again to those teachers and records, um. Of principals.
And I think the goal was to, at some point. Have them come back.
Yeah, yeah, we'll discuss that. In a close session to, to figure out how to. All right, our last one here for policy governance is G P nine, uh, board member covenant.
Uh, to build, the policy statement is to build and maintain productive, effective relationships. Board members shall maintain communication. And interaction that builds upon mutual respect and trust, embodies civility, and respects decisions made by the full board.
Right, absolutely. So communication and trust, um, whether we agree to disagree or vice versa. Um, we all realize at the end of the day, we're a board and, um, we work together as a team very well. If there's concerns, we always work through those, which I always appreciate too, so. Details and communications matter, so. Um, discussions, otherwise I'll just look for a verbal on G P nine. Possible. First, second, uh, those are favorite, please say hi. Oppose, none motion carry. All right. Uh, rolling into the other board work then, uh, back to Lynn Knight, our business manager. Um, she's going to present our financial audit.
Yes, it was a, a much better experience than the past year, I can tell you about right now. Um, we had our new auditors, Curver Rose, uh, came in in July and December and, uh, you know, July and. I think it was in May they came to, there was two times. Because they're new, they like to come in before year end just to get a feel for the district and to understand. How the district flows, who's in charge, you know, what, some internal controls. They came back in July and they finished up the audit in July. It was a, it was a, a partnership. I actually felt comfortable asking questions. I felt comfortable questioning some things that maybe I've done that maybe wasn't the proper coding. Um, but it was a very, um, give and take experience. Now, there were two items that, they're not really findings, um, but they did note some things. First of all, um, they wanted, I wanted to talk about the, um, single audit. Since we have S R, well, we've got a single audit forever. We get a lot of federal money and a lot of state money, and if we get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal and state money, we're eligible for a single audit. Which basically means that they have to select some federal or state programs and test them in depth. So we were subject to a single audit. They tested, uh, the state, the federal programs. For the child nutrition cluster and the S R's one, two and three, which we all knew was going to get tested thoroughly. Uh, and also the state programs was the state special education and the equalization aid and the high, for high poverty. Of all those programs, we did not receive any findings, which were, it was very, it was very, very good. There were some questions that I had. That, um, I didn't really know who to ask prior to our new auditors. But when I finally did get the opportunity to ask them, I did it right, so I was pretty. Um, one of the items they did note was of the financial statements. So since we are a small school district. Uh, we have to follow gap. And there is a huge template. If you saw the audit report, it's a very in-depth document. And in order to complete, well, first of all, gap changes almost every single year. So there's always new pronouncements that are coming out and how to present those financial statements. So in order to present them in proper order, we hire Curver Rose to do our financial statements. And that is a conflict of interest because they actually perform the audit. And they, and they prepare our financial statements. So that is very, very common for smaller school districts. Because we don't have the capacity to research all of the gap pronouncements in order to present the financial, or complete the financial statements. In an order that has, that is required. The responsibility, however, still lies with the school district. So once they prepare the financial statements, they send it off to me. And I look at every, just like Darren, I look at every single word, number, comma, period, everything. Because I know once I sign off on it, it's my responsibility and if something was presented mistakenly, that's on me. So I do a very thorough job in reviewing our financial statements. That does not get away from them noting that in the financial report, that because there is a conflict of interest. So, um, it would be a finding if there was somebody at the district that was not qualified to review the financial statements. We do not have that. Um, the auditors also noted one observation where we had in excess of a million dollars at one bank. Now, everybody knows that there is a threshold for insurance, um, insurance coverage. That if you have a million dollars, you're, you're, you're at risk, because if the bank ever went under, you would not receive your full million dollars back. So, I understand what they're saying. Now, in, in order to prevent that, they, they either want you to. Uh, spread out your money, uh, through, of other banks for under the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. Or you can get collateral at the Nukusa Port Edward State Bank that basically collateralizes, collateralizes anything over and above two hundred and fifty thousand. Well, that being said, um, we rarely have a million dollars at the Nukusa Port Edward State Bank. It just so happens that we received a ton of money at the end of June. And it's really difficult to figure out how much money is exactly right there on June thirtieth. Because you're closing the books, you're, you're processing state aid payments, you're processing federal aid, aid payments. There's a lot of stuff happening in, in order to, I, I could transfer it right down to a hundred thousand dollars, but I guarantee you we'd be overdrawn. And I would rather risk that than be overdrawn and incur a ton of fees. So they noted it, they didn't create a finding, but they did note it. And I will be watching for that, um, next year. I will, uh, specifically look at our balance on June twenty ninth. Just to see what it's at, and maybe then I will transfer it out to our P M A account, which is, um, in, uh, Milwaukee. And, uh, they are, they're a separate account and that would be, that would, that would cover it, so. Other than that, the auditors did, uh, provide an unqualified, unqualified opinion, which is a clean F O M. And I would ask that, are this school board approved the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal.
They asked question.
Really? I told you four times to email me.
Did, uh, were they helpful in giving you some more observations or best practices also?
Oh, absolutely.
Is there anything off the top of your head that you could?
You know, um.
Anything that caught your eye that would be something good? How, how most audits work, I'm sorry, that, we're kind of talking. So what happens in an audit is they look for all bad stuff. Okay, and that's called findings, okay? And then most of the times in audits, then they'll come back and either give you things they call observations. Or best practice. And those aren't findings, but they've noticed, well, maybe you should balance this every quarter instead of every six months. Or just, they're not findings, they don't rise to that level, but a lot of times they give you good ideas of what, uh. Other things that we can be looking for to make the world better for us. So was there anything that you?
Well, not to choose our own part in the business office, but, um, they said this was the easiest first year of client that they've ever had. And they also send other school districts to us. So we can tell them how to be more efficient than they're just.
That's, uh, works for the previous business manager.
I guess, I, I have worked with Lynn for a long time and I do do this. I guess I would open it up to, you guys have any questions about how she explained those findings? From another point of view, if you want to.
Okay, we had opportunities to email her.
They're both very, very minor, very common, nothing to be worth the mo.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right, thank you again, Lynn, for your work. All right, um, present financial audit of the board as presented, um, looking for your motion to. All in favor, uh, please say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, none motion carry. Thank you again, Lynn. Um, actually, we're, we're back to Lynn again, um, for our open enrollment space availability, uh, non-special education.
Yes, um, we actually do this for special education and non-special education. So I will be, um, asking for, for the non-special education. Per state statute, the school board has to determine how many seats we have available in order for open enrollment. Kids to come into our district. Our philosophy has always been to accept all students that would like to open enroll into our. Into our school district that do not have special education needs, because I think Brian will be talking about the cap portion. So when I, but, but the state statute also says that you have to approve it by grade level. So what I did in the memo in your board packet is, these are current open enrolled students per grade. Uh, so for four K, we have twenty-four students that are open enrolled into Nukusa from other school districts. Uh, grade, uh, kindergarten, thirty-five, grade one, twenty-eight, so on and so forth. Now, in order to, um, make sure that we don't turn any student away. Terry and I talked about what the cap should be at each grade level. And we thought that sixty non-special education open enrollment spaces. At each grade level would be high enough that we would not be able to turn anybody away, uh, if they would like to come to Nukusa. So our recommendation is that we, that the school board approves sixty non-special education, not an open enrollment. Or, non-special education open enrollment spaces at each grade level for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Um, I just had a quick question.
Yes.
Obviously, we have, I mean, we want as many kids as we can at the school district, but is there a reason why there has to be a cap?
State statute says we have to. Uh, yeah, I prefer not to.
If we, uh, if we did get more than sixty, we'd come, do you come back to us for, for a new thing or?
All right, well, it sounds like we're stuck at sixty and don't have a choice, so we will look for a motion here to open enrollments, Jason Villalbue. Uh, non-special education. Looking for a first and. Second, first by Mark, second by Dave, those in favor, please say hi. Opposed, none motion carried. All right, thank you for that one, Lynn. They were all caught up on that. Um, now we're doing a special education for open enrollment, uh, Brian Grill.
So mine's a little different than what, so. We talk about this every year about whether we put cats for students with disabilities at Nukusa. One of the reasons we discussed for many years now is because we have a set number of special education teachers. So if we allow a larger number like Lynn has proposed, proposed to you guys. I would have to be coming back to you guys saying, I need additional staff, I need additional staff. So what I do based on the staff we have, I calculate. The state has a formula that they give. I calculate units for students to say, based on your services, this is how many units you take. And they have a recommendation saying, each special education teacher based on their billing level. Can take this many units to say that's a comfortable case for, for our special education teachers. And we're not overextending that by having too large a case. So, and how I do it, I cannot do my calculations based on disability or. Based on a certain disability like L D, E V V, things like that. It's all based on units and minutes. So what you've seen in front of you, I have what are. So what you see in front of you, I have what our current units are. Then I project students moving from buildings, graduating, things of that nature. To say, here's calculate how many units I may have available. Um, you will notice at the elementary level, at the cross categorical area. We have nine units available, which is roughly depending on the need of the student, like as I said, that's sort of the students I would have. Um, the one I want you to notice is early childhood. Right now for next year, she has fifteen point six units open, which is about seventy eight students. Now, I will say, that happens every year. Because I calculate her once moving from four K to kindergarten. And we haven't had child development days yet, or all the birth to three referrals. So it always looks like she has a large number of seats. But I can't calculate her in process referrals. So for example, right now, yes, it says I have seventy eight seats. We currently have six referrals at the early childhood area. So that one always becomes lower because I have in process referrals because a lot of those early childhood ones. Start coming this time of year or next week. Um, other than that, it's pretty typical. It's like one or two spots open. Um, for the first year in a while, we do have a few speech and language seats open. Because we have students who show with pathologists that have really built a phenomenal program. So they have been assisting students and we have been entering and exiting speech and language students as they gain skills. Um, so that's exciting to see that we do have a few spots open there. The only other thing I mentioned, because I don't calculate on here. If a child were to apply that receive occupational therapy, physical therapy, phase of that later. We contract for those services through seats of five. So technically, we don't have any seats available. For students that have those because we always contract and any additional assistance. So we don't have our own O T and P T on staff. Because our numbers and our services on what's the, it doesn't warrant us having an O T or P T on staff. She thought we're too small and our numbers aren't there. So if a student were to apply that maybe had O T and P T within their. Um, I E P, that might be one where we say, yeah, we're capped because we don't have them on staff. We're always contracting for that service.
Is it true that um, we have like a waiting list for some of those categories?
We, we can't have a waiting list. So once we deny what I always tell families, you know. If you want to check back in and reapply again at later time and see if there's space available, but I cannot maintain a waiting list.
Okay, I was just because I know that a lot, sometimes a lot of people trying to get in, so I just didn't know if there was a home maintenance or anything, but that makes sense. Um, any follow-up questions for Brian? I know our specialized program is, is flourishing, so I appreciate all the work that you guys are putting into that. So. No other questions that I will look for in the motion to approve?
The motion is actually written. So is that been true?
Sure. Based on the Director of Student Services Review of Special Education Teachers and Revenue Service Providers Case load. Projected case load for next school year, projected enrollment and D P I case load recommendations. I move to approve nine cross, cross categorical units at Pumpkin Elementary. Fifty point six or fifteen point six early childhood units at Pumpkin Elementary. Three point three cross category units at Nacusa High School. Zero cross category categorical seats at Wise Academy. Zero occupational therapy seats at the district level. Zero physical therapy seats at the district level and twenty point each speech and language units at the district level. Um, before I look for a motion, just gonna ask if I missed anything.
I'll uh, I'll make a motion uh, based on the reading and the uh. Verbiage and the proposal, I'll make a motion.
The second by Dave, um, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you, um, and thank you, Brian. Uh, rolling on over to uh, Mr. Whitmore, Educational Options Accountability Report, Special Needs Scholarship Program.
So in this month's packet, this is the time of year where we get approval on our. Uh, Educational Options Accountability Report and Special Needs Scholarship Program. And that's outlined, we have to share this with the public every year. So we've updated this and need board approval. So we're looking for a motion on that, to approve.
Uh, any questions? For table? I will look for a motion then. First by Dave, second by Chad, um, all favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carry. Alright, now we're going to look for, and maybe have a discussion here. I think, I think as a board. I just, I guess I just want clarification. Are we able to discuss this on a later date?
Yes, yes.
So I want to look for a motion then to discuss the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school calendar.
So we'll, we'll put it on the February agenda.
Right.
Yeah, that's okay. When I wrap up the consent agenda.
And let's not, let's not vote on it.
Correct, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure it was okay to the board, so. Alright, uh, we're gonna roll into the consent agenda, um. Donations, Rebecca, I hope I got that last name correct, Emma, is it Emma?
Yeah.
Emin, alright, yeah. Uh, special education teacher, I don't know if, I guess Brian, if that was on your behalf, I mean. I can just check Rebecca has been working out on the element three this year. Um, and she took another two to see like points. Um, but she was giving a lot to the district and think her for all her work, she will be this. Uh, thank you for your uh, dedication to the district, Rebecca. Um. Compliance none this month. And then I did, would you read the donations?
Oh, yes, I, I'm gonna start with a question. Uh, there, there was a large donation of. From the train show logistics and control. Is anybody here that learned anything? I assume it's in the district somewhere, I mean.
Lynn, can you remind me? What is it saying here?
Well, donated, it was six hundred and nineteen blue crates with electrical supplies, forty best chairs. Gina sound systems, extra sound systems, office supplies, three bags standard round base, easels, photo booth, seven. Ninety-five extension cords, power strips, clipboards, twenty-three garbage cans, six pot.
My gosh, what a gift. Was this a Santa delivery?
Diana. Train show logistics is, is a business.
Yeah, they were going out of business. And so what happened was um, a parent emailed Bill Seifel. And Bill Seifel went running down.
Alright. Yeah.
History vehicles down to.
Yeah, okay. So uh, we received all that uh, great stuff from a uh, from train show logistics uh, and control.
Were they, were they out of?
Roll somewhere, I think, yeah. So boy, that is a lot, a lot of stuff, man. Okay. We also received one hundred dollars from Encourage for the essential closet and twenty dollars for the Sacred Heart. Uh, from Sacred Heart for the Angel Tree. And backpack for kids. Uh, we always get great donations for this. Fifty dollars from Sacred Heart Church. One hundred dollars from David and Carol Sonnenberg. Twenty-five dollars from Diane Greiner and sixty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Women in Mission. So. Again, thank you guys, or everybody that donated for all the great stuff that you. Uh, help us.
Thank you Darren, and thank you again to those uh, donors. Um, just a minute here, we had a, a December board meeting, twelve fourteen, that we had last month. Or this month, board workshop last week on the fourth. Um, and I want to make an exception before I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. As we are approving the, the exception is going to be evaluating the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar at a later date. Besides that, I am going to look to move forward on approving the consent agenda. Smoothed. First and a second, um, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, emotion carried. Thank you, everyone. Um, future agenda items, our next board workshop is February first. And we'll be discussing uh, discipline, topic of interest and why is. The regular board meeting will be the eighth of next month. Um. With that being said, um, the board meeting is over for those here in attendance. But we are going to journey to a closed session and with that I will need a motion. And then a little pause. Um, alright. Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes.
Mark Blockner.
Yes. Alright, we'll take a bathroom stretch break.
You said you were in two.